All right.
Yeah, Lee Mansky.
It is seven o'clock. We will call the city council meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Ask everyone to silence their cell phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Kathleen Refkin, acting mayor. Mayor Whalen is unavailable tonight, and joining me tonight are council members Peter Vinkery, Claudia Lacy, our city engineer Allison Fawski, director of Public Works Gary Peters, our director of administration Ally Bollos, our city clerk Ann Meyerhoff, also to my right, city administrator Jasper Krugel, director of finance Brian Graham, our community development director David Abel, our city attorney Sarah Sensala, and our chief of police Paul Falls. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
Nope.
I get a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. We do not have any special presentations tonight, and no one has signed up under persons to be heard. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Under consent agenda, we have A, approve work session meeting minutes from February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four; B, approve city council regular meeting minutes from February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four; C, resolution number ten dash twenty-four, approve claims; D, approve property lease agreement for Trista Fields; E, approve conditional offer letter for Miguel Montez de Oca, public works maintenance worker; F, accept the resignation of Jonathan Guyen, public works maintenance worker, effective March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four; G, approve summary from city administrator performance review; H, approve amendment to public works two thousand twenty-four equipment capital improvement project; I, approve capital improvement equipment purchase; J, award street sweeping services to Carefree Services, Inc.; K, award park trail overlay paving to JBT Blacktopping; L, Woodland Cove eleventh additions, items one, two, and three; M, Woodland Cove twelfth edition, items one and two; N, resolution number sixteen dash twenty-four, approve change order two for city project oh-one dash two thousand twenty-three, street reconstruction and utility improvement project; and O is a resolution number seventeen dash twenty-four, approve professional services for pavement management plan. Motion to approve consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. We do not have any public hearings. Thank you for coming. All right, now we move on to business items. Item A, authorize city council members for fire district subcommittee. Jasper?
Thank you, acting mayor and members of council. As you may have heard, there's been a little bit of movement regarding the formation of a fire district. One of the things that mound, we had a kind of a preliminary meeting, well, I guess almost two weeks ago now, where mound, Minutrista, St. Bonifatius all kind of met, say, hey, what should we do? How do we want to proceed? Both the fire chiefs are saying we should start moving down this path for maybe council member Vinkery and council member Lacy. This is something that's been talked about for almost, well, almost ten years now. There's been a plan and a study, and we're kind of at the end of that ten-year window, and it's set up. By then, you should have a fire district probably starting. So we were kind of waiting on the fire chiefs to say now is the time, and they've kind of signaled that. So one of the things they asked from us is to form a group that could participate in the meetings, and what I'm proposing is keeping that consistent with what we've done with the St. Bonifatius Advisory Committee and the mound advisory committee with having council member, acting mayor Refkin, and then the mayor on that. So right now, we don't anticipate, there's no like costs to this, but if there are costs, those would go back to city council at some point in time. Really, I think we're just working through the logistics of how this happens, how you form a district, what kind of legal implications there are, what kind of notice period, that type of thing. So very preliminary stages, but I think it's important to have a defined group and then make sure that defined group is reporting back to council on a regular basis as things develop. So I would also be on that group, too. I failed to mention that, so it'd be the three of us. So that's what we're looking for tonight, just authorizing that fire district subcommittee. I'll entertain any questions anybody may have.
What cities would be involved?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So right now, we participate with the St. Bonifatius, which includes Lake Town Township, Watertown Township, and us, so there's four cities there. The townships, unclear how that, we'll all check out if that's going to be a contract for services deal or what, but mound provides services for, what is it, Minnetoka Beach, Spring Park, Shorewood, mound, obviously, and Minutrista, so those five cities.
Shorewood.
Yep, yep. So part of Shorewood on Enchanted Island, very, very small part. So otherwise, Excelsior provides the, you know, Shorewood proper. So it could be up to seven, six cities at the most, so, but it's, yeah, following the plan that was kind of adopted or looked at in the past, this is kind of the next step. One of the big questions, you know, do we want to have, do we want to give the district taxing authority or not, which means that they would be under the special taxing districts like what, like Minna, or, yeah, yeah, Minnehaw Creek watershed district, mosquito control, if you look at your taxes, that would be, there'd be another line item on there, so we're, or it could be a JPA situation where the group sends us a bill and we pay it, similar to what we're doing now. I think either of those models, Minutrista would gain some, some say in budget. Right now, we don't technically have any say in budget. We've been lucky, we've had a very good, both groups have been good to work with, they listen, but they don't technically have to. So it's been good, but we would technically get a little bit more say, I think, in how the budget is formed.
Are there other advantages then to doing the district?
Definitely, yeah. So there's, there's an economy of scale, you know, St. Bonnie and mound have been really good at figuring out what equipment they should buy, and they're not buying redundant equipment, like there's one ladder truck between the two agencies. So there's things like that that have already been kind of worked out, but this would officialize that a little bit more.
Formalize the training they've been doing, and in the long run, it would help us because we're using both, so then we would have, as Jasper said, depending power on what spot, how it's spent, and then if we do put a public safety building in Woodland Cove, like we talked about, it would be easier to man it, pulling from both versus it would be in St. Bonifatius, St. Bonifatius's district, but how would we staff it appropriately? And the biggest, the reason that both the chiefs are looking to move forward with it now is that they have firefighters who live in Minutrista but not in their district. So St. Bonnie is going to lose potentially a firefighter who's moving from an area that's covered to a different area of Minutrista that's no longer covered. Mound is also going to lose one of their firefighters who's moving to a different area of Minutrista, so it will help with retention, because then they can continue working, because it would be one district, which is the big thing that I think is pushing the chiefs forward with it at a faster pace.
Definitely, yeah. So it's something that I think we've known needs, is going to happen at some point in time, and we've been waiting on the chiefs to both kind of indicate now is the time to start. And this will be a long process, so just timeline-wise, the earliest this could ever form and be established is, I think, July first, two thousand twenty-five. Likely, it'd be better to do, I think, in my opinion, we'll have to work through this, but one-one, two thousand twenty-six, then you can go through and you can have your, the district itself, if it's a taxing authority, could then hold a budget, preliminary levy, final levy, similar to what we would do, it'd be running parallel, so, and then they could adopt their own first budget, and then that would be active in two thousand twenty-six.
And the reason it takes long is if we do do a district, it has to go to the legislature, and they have to approve it, so we have to go to next year's session.
Yep.
And Jasper's working with Hennepin County to find out approx, just very high level costs for residents versus what we pay now versus what all the homes would pay, because it can be assessed based on your home value, just like this now, but it would be everyone. So instead of just, you know, certain part of Minutrista that goes to St. Bonnie's and the other part goes to mound, so it would just be everyone in the district would pay the same rate based on their home values. So the good news is it would come out of our levy, and it would be a separate line item on your taxes, so instead of the...
Seven hundred thirteen dollars.
That we pay each year in our levy, it would be a line item, so residents would clearly say, this is what you're paying for fire services now, instead of it just being rolled into ours. So transparency-wise, I think it would help with the residents knowing what the services cost.
And are there guidelines for this, like with cities, where the League of Cities can, it helps put guardrails, how to do things?
They can. This is, this has been done a bunch of times, so there's some good guidance on how to do it, for sure. The big question will be the format or the type of district we want to have, if it's going to be a JPA or if it's going to have taxing authority, and I, I'm not sure what the preference is from other communities, but I think from our community, it's been stated that it's a taxing authority model.
It's a JPA.
A joint powers agreement.
Thank you.
So hopefully, more to come soon with this. But yeah, what we're looking for is a motion tonight to approve the subcommittee, and then we can report back accordingly.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. All right, next, we have resolution number eighteen dash twenty-four regarding various housing bills.
Thank you, acting mayor Refkin. So this is very timely, as there's numerous bills kind of moving their way through various committees at the Minnesota Legislature regarding zoning, preemption of what the city can do for zoning, the land that's within their, their boundaries. These are fairly extreme, I would say, as far as what they would limit us to be able to do. So there would be a right for some of these, now, these are all working through committees, there's amendments that have been added, so they've changed slightly and they changed pretty quickly. But really, what, what the, what the crux is, is they're removing the, some of the rights the city has to determine what can be done in certain areas of the city, and really, it's related to housing and the kind of minimum units per lot, you know, and they break it down into the different classes of cities. So we're a fourth-class city, which means we're less than ten thousand people.
But we're rapidly approaching that number?
Correct, so likely, we won't be considered a third-class city until the twenty-thirties census, so they kind of go the census dates, they don't kind of extrapolate, I believe. But even if, even as a fourth-class city, some of the bill language that we've seen so far is saying that at a minimum, you need to offer two units per lot. So what that would mean is that like any single-family lot in like Hunter's Crest or Woodland Cove that was developed as a single-family lot for one unit, if passed, we would then, there would, there would be a right for the builder or the developer to put a duplex on there if they chose. As you move up the classes of cities, those requirements get larger. It might be four units per lot, or eight units, six units per lot, depending on how big your city is. So there's a few other states that have passed legislation like this as of late. Washington State is one to be example, an example that I've looked into, and, you know, it's very challenging for municipalities who, you can understand, I think, I'm looking at Peter, you know, you've gone through the comprehensive plan process, it's a decades-long planning process that, you know, we may or may not like as a city, but it allows us to kind of determine where things happen, at what pace, you know, where infrastructure's built up in certain areas to accommodate what we think is going to happen. This would just open all that up, somebody could build an apartment complex in the northwest side of town and, on a forty-acre, you know, egg preserve parcel, and just, we'd have to, I don't know, it's unclear who would, who would be responsible for infrastructure. So it, it's very messy, it's, it may work for built-out cities a little bit better than us, but this isn't just the Hennepin County metro area thing, this is a statewide thing. So it'd be every little town, everybody would be required to make these changes. So the resolution you see before you tonight is opposing all of these bills in general as they change, and just the idea would be if we do adopt this, we would then share that with the, I don't know, there's four subcommittees, two in each of the senate and the house, that we would share this with. We would do a little marketing campaign, like on social media and our website, because I honestly don't think residents know the implications of this and how it might affect the, you know, feeling of your neighborhood or your, the culture of the city and all that. We're, you know, one of the examples I use is like, you know, a large lake lot on Lake Minnetoka could be purchased, and they could put up a multifamily house on it, or, you know, like an apartment, which it, I mean, that might be okay if that's what we have at zone, you know, we just, I think we're saying we want, we want to have say in what happens in the city. So a lot of these bills are kind of pushing that away from us, so I think it's been very clear, League of Minnesota Cities is opposed to this, they've been pushing and talking to the, to the legislators about this.
There's several versions of it.
Yeah, and it's bipartisan right now, so it's both, it originally, five years ago, it started off as a Republican initiative for the first couple of years, and then kind of relying on this Housing First study that they did, saying that a lot of the stuff that we were doing, we're driving housing prices up, under that, I don't know, guise, but now there's bipartisan supports of both Republicans and Democrats are, are, you know, in support of this. So, and it's under, under the idea that there's housing needed in Minnesota. So that's, that's essentially what was, what was said.
And, and just last week, the senate Housing and Homelessness Prevention Committee advanced it, so it's moving forward.
It is. I think the last I heard, I think LMC just sent out a bulletin today saying that it's been incorporated into, I think, the senate omnibus bill. So the omnibus bill, if you don't know, is just, has a whole bunch of bills associated with it.
Everything in it.
And there's some form of it, it's, it's definitely not as bad as what it was originally, but there's still a lot of things that we would, we would be losing a lot of rights as a city.
Well, and one of them is it's subject, building permits to a sixty-day rule, so you have to do everything, approve it with, or deny it within sixty days. There's, yeah, the emails we get from the league, you read them, it's, yeah, it'll make your head spin.
Yeah. So this is just a resolution, I borrowed it from our neighbors over in Shorewood. They recently adopted this last week. So one of the things that the League of Minnesota City said, you can adopt a resolution, you know, reach out to your legislators, we've reached out to our legislators about this already, our representatives, but I think it's important that we get it to the people on the committee, so they know that, you know, cities are really opposed to this. I think the marketing piece locally is good, because I don't, I, I'm fairly certain not many people in the general public know what the implications of this may be. So that, that's the, the crux of it. I can entertain any questions. I know acting mayor Refkin also is well-versed in this, and David as well, he's, he's aware of these things, and, you know, it kind of throw, could throw a lot of our planning that we've done over decades, you know, kind of out the window. So I don't know of anything really good that can come from the, the bill, I'm open if anybody...
So we just contacted Andrew Meyer, or what are we? Andrew knows it's getting enough other residents to start making it known to other representatives, how bad this will be and how they don't like it, because I know the city, I haven't seen any cities that are happy about it.
No.
But the representatives on both ends don't seem to care, so it's going to come down to making them aware that their constituents that vote for them are really, really unhappy about this.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's been portrayed as a win-win for, you know, more affordable housing, and they are thinking about these things where we're on the edge of the metro, and we don't have the infrastructure to handle this. And of course, we've worked for years with the council to, to shape all this, and that would just go out without ado, so I think it's good to get the other side of that out as much as possible. I'll make the motion.
So we're Vinkery is making the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. So Jasper, you will get that done, and Ally will get it posted.
Great.
All right. Next, we have city project oh-one dash twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, street improvement project.
Thank you, acting mayor Refkin and council. Included in your packet this evening for consideration is award of contract for this year's overlay project. We've included, I handed out to you a summary of the, the bids, that was not included in the packet, so you can see we had eight bidders for this project. This is the overlay of Nike Road, Amber Lane, and Stone Bridge, Hermitage Trail, Nike Road, and then we also included overlay of Hunter's Trail as well, just to patch that up so we can get that area redeveloped. So like I said, the good news is we got eight bids. You can see there was, there was a bit of a range in that, and you can, you tend to see that with bidding on projects like this, but we did have WM Mueller came in as a little bid at two eighty-seven, one oh six point seven zero, which was underestimated, so we bid the project early, so I'm happy to say that we came in under budget or under the estimate on that. WM Mueller was the paving contractor for last year's street reconstruction project, so we don't have any concerns with Mueller being able to perform the work. We did reach out to Mueller, well, I don't know if Chris got ahold of them, but we've been trying to get ahold of Mueller to see if they have any indication of when they would start the project, so we don't have that information at this time, but once we have that, we'll certainly provide an update to the residents, to notify them that they can expect to see work in the area. It won't be hugely disruptive with just being an overlay project, there's a little bit of curb and gutter replacement, but it's, it's a fairly straightforward, minimal interruption project. We've included, we've calculated the total estimated cost of the project at three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and four cents. That includes a contingency and then indirect costs that have been authorized today, plus the proposed construction services, which is part B to this, this, this item in your, in your packet this evening. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, we would, our recommendation is to approve the resolution, accepting bids and awarding the contract.
Any questions?
No.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. Next item is resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-four, city project oh-two dash twenty-four, pavement maintenance project.
Yeah, I'll take that, members of the council. This is the second half of this, since we have awarded the contract, we are going to need a professional services agreement for the construction engineering services with WSB for managing the project, as well as inspections and making sure everything is done per spec, so that is what this is for. We're recommending that, with, it's a, the indirect costs of it with that will be about twenty percent of the, of the project of the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I believe we have gone under the last couple of times on this, because these projects are pretty straightforward and simple, but fairly easy to do, there's not a lot of work, especially this one, this year is going to be a really nice, easy project, should be in and out pretty quick. Two of the bigger areas don't have any impact for sewer water, anything like that in the way, so no manholes to go around, no gate valves, so it really makes it easy, it's just wide-open mill overlay, so it'll be really good. So we're recommending approving the resolution of two thousand twenty-four for the professional services proposal for WSB for construction services for the milling overlay project this year of, city project number zero-one-two-four.
Any questions for Gary? Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. Next, we have...
I'm gonna be myself again here for the twenty-one, resolution twenty-one twenty-four for the city project oh-two, oh-two twenty-four. This is for the pavement maintenance project, we do these pavement projects every year. This would be for the design bidding, construction administration for it, for that project, which includes crack filling, reclamite, sealant applications, crack, seal coat and fog seal, and then we're also including fog seal in two parking lots for the city parks, one at Lyle Park and one at Slope Creek. The estimated cost for the improvements this year is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents, that is paid out of like every year out-of-the-road maintenance fund. We have, some of the stuff was postponed to do, now it's come forward to get it done, so we're recommending that council approve the proposal for the professional services for this project. The total design and construction services is to be, is no greater than seventeen thousand dollars. The timeline for the project would be get everything prepared and all for quote by March eighteenth, accept an award to contract May twentieth, and then have the activities done during the summer, which is what we normally do. Nothing strange out of this, so, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. There's a lot that we're doing this year, and as we go on, this will become more and more and more the norm. Instead of these big projects, you're going to see a lot more money going towards the maintenance to keep the roads that we have done in the past due through either milling overlays, the recons, or the reclamation projects. They will need more maintenance to keep them up, so we don't have these big-ticket items anymore. So as we go forward, this unfortunately will be increasing in value, but we will get longevity and life out of our streets. So staff recommends approving the resolution twenty-one twenty-four to approve the services agreement for the preparation, distribution of the quote package for the twenty-four pavement maintenance project for city project zero-two-four.
And Gary, maybe just for clarification, so yeah, this is under the one seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, so that's why we can go up for quotes, and we do have a good group of vendors that we solicit the quotes from, right?
Yes, yep, yeah, we, we have, and we've been, they, they're, it's, it's a, it's a niche group, and the ones that we do get are very good, so...
Can I jump in here, too? So this is, this is proposal is earlier than the council's typically seen, and the reason being is, you know, Gary's talked about wanting to get this quote package out earlier so that the, these contractors aren't getting their dockets full, so the intent is to get on this cadence, similar to what we have with the street improvement project, so that council will be seeing these earlier in the year, so we can get the quote packages out earlier and, you know, get as many quotes as we can. But as Gary indicated, we do have good vendors, we just want to make sure that they're not too busy to look at Minutrista's work as well.
Get them while they're hungry yet.
Any questions for Gary or Allison? With that, can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three oh. That concludes our business items. Jasper, first?
Yeah, I think, I think Ann, our city clerk, has some PNP election report, so she can tell you what PNP stands for.
Okay, as you know, we had the presidential nomination primary on March fifth, and so we started the day with six thousand five hundred and twenty-five registered voters in Minutrista. At the end of the day, we had eight hundred and twenty votes cast on election day, so that's about twelve and a half percent, which is pretty normal for this kind of election. I mean, it really is, so. So in absentee, early voting, we had forty-six total in the forty-six days we did it. So I guess it's like one a day. So we're done with that. So now we just have the state primary coming up August thirteenth, and absentee starts for that on June twenty-eighth and goes up until the twelfth of August. So that's in a nutshell.
Did we get any write-ins, any chowalas?
Nope.
No Mickey Mouse's?
Nope.
And then I have a couple things, if I may.
Yes.
I'll give a little brief update just on the city events that we have coming up as it's kind of Q-two is when it kind of happens. We have recycle day, May fourth, from eight AM to three PM. So mark that in your calendar. Eight AM to three PM. And then on May seventh, we have the State of the City address out at Burl Oaks. That starts at five thirty, goes to seven thirty. We're also going to be doing a commission appreciation event there. So we're going to do that, our initial one, that we're going to pair with that. There is a cash bar at this event, just so everybody is aware. I'm not sure, we had, I think we had close to a hundred people show up last year. So it was a really good showing. I don't know if the cash bar had anything to do with it or not, but just say that it's available. And then on May eighteenth, from eleven AM to two PM, we have Tris the day. So make sure, hopefully, the weather, Paul's in charge of the weather that day. So hopefully, the weather's good and we have a good turnout there. On June fourth, from five thirty to eight thirty is the city bus tour. Now, that's kind of a first-come, first-served deal. I think there was a small, I think it was like ten dollars or something, five dollars.
I can't remember.
We'll have to look back. It's a small amount to cover the food, but it's a really good event. I thought, I found it really interesting to drive around the city and kind of get lost a little bit even. But so that, we haven't, that's not open to the public yet. We'll do some postings on that so people can sign up.
And State of the City is limited seating. Likely won't fill up, but people register for that too.
That was out in the messenger, right?
It was, yeah.
Yep. So those are the events that we have coming up here, so pretty event-heavy. We're going to start planning for the tree lighting event too. Ally and I just had an internal conversation about that. And I think we're going to start doing, I think in April, May, do monthly meetings just to kind of get that organized to see. So there might be some questions that we come to city council about, like if we want to expand certain things. I know there's been some firework talk, as some other communities do that, trails. You know, maybe a hayride thing or something like that. So we'll talk about it. Everything, you know, we do get some donations, but it's not one hundred percent funded through donations. So we'll have some more conversations about that. And then spent a little bit of time at the Capitol, one for a hearing to get some money for the Truck Highway Seven Coalition that we have. So kind of getting some seed money to get some things done with that. Didn't really go that well. They kind of said they didn't want to set the precedent of funding these types of organizations as they've never done that before, apparently. So that was brought forward by Senator Morrison. So we'll see, maybe there'll be some way to maneuver some other existing funds to get that done. That's a group that just was formed using legislative money to do, to have MinDOT do a study about safety along that corridor. So we really need the group, the coalition itself, to kind of be organized, stay on top of those things. So right now, it's just kind of a mashup of all the cities and there's not like a true leader of the group yet. So that money was to get maybe an executive director or a part-time executive director similar to what a lot of the other coalitions, corridor coalitions have around the state. So if that doesn't get funded, there might be an ask in the future to see if the city of Minatrista, along with all the other cities on the corridor, want to contribute to fund that. So and then City at the Hill Day, there's a pretty good meeting. The governor actually showed up and he talked. So that was the first year that I've had him do that. Usually, the governor's invited and then somebody else shows up on his behalf because it's in the middle of a legislative session. This has been, yeah, I guess the last five years or so. But, so that was good. A lot of good information, really heavy on the housing stuff that we've already talked about quite a bit. There's some E S S T language, which I was hoping we'd never have to talk about E S S T again, but there's already some E S S T language change. It's that earn, sick and safe time. You know, a lot of the things that we did to kind of cater to what we have going on here. One of the changes that's now, I think, moving forward is that if we offer sick, all of the sick has to be for the E S S T allowed absence. So that would essentially say, well, everything we did before, we'll just get rid of and just rename sick E S S T because apparently that's what they wanted. So that opens up a couple different, maybe potential challenges here with, because that, the allowed uses for E S S T are more broad than are sick. So you could potentially utilize some large banks of sick time that have accumulated over a long period of time for E S S T-related items.
How does that work if you have a joint bank for sick and vacation?
Well, it wouldn't really affect what we do with our PTO, it would be the unions.
Yeah, the PTO would.
They are still separate.
So, you know, if we would, you know, one of the things we'll talk about in two years when we're negotiating union contracts again, or, you know, PTO, if we want to push the transition to PTO or talk about that. But, so there's a lot of things that are changing. Housing would probably be the biggest thing that we're seeing right now at this legislative session. Obviously, we're going after bonding money. We met with a few representatives and senators regarding our bonding requests. If you follow MMB, the Minnesota Management Budget, released their biennium report and then the surplus increased significantly. So they actually moved the amount of money that the state can bond for up. I forget the total amount, but I want to say it's like around a hundred and fifty million more. And everybody's like, well, that money should go towards, everybody in local government is saying that money should go towards local government because right now, the governor's only allocated about forty million towards all of local government bonding requests, which isn't much. If you can imagine, we have an eighteen and a half million dollar request. One of the representatives we talked to said that they talked to three different cities and those three cities together had over a hundred and fifty million just for those three cities in bonding requests. So as you can imagine, there's way more projects than money to go around. So anything that we can add to that, great. They are, the governor is prioritizing water infrastructure projects, which is good because that's what we were requesting. So we will see, we will know a lot more by mid-May. So we'll see, that's all I can say. But the meetings were good, everybody was receptive. It's just there isn't that much money to go around. That's all I have.
Any other staff reports?
Well, I can give you a little update on the Glosby Center. So they have a board meeting on March fourteenth, and the next one's April sixth. They have, as I said last time, interim director, but she's really getting everything organized and it's kind of exciting. They have figured out that they utilized four thousand four hundred and thirty hours from volunteers last year. They are implementing a whole bunch of new programs, fitness, real estate issues for seniors, like downsizing and protecting them from real estate scams. There's, so there's lots of classes for seniors. They're adding advanced care planning because a lot of times, they're going into different care facilities and they really don't know how to plan, or their children don't know how to plan. Skilled nursing versus private nursing, all these kind of issues. And then, of course, there's going to be classes on specific health conditions. Diabetes is a very popular topic. They're going to make sure they have at least one lunch per month with music. That's very popular. They're working on some additional fundraising projects and they did enter into a partnership with MacIntyre's already, which is kind of nice. So they raised about twenty-five thousand, the Glosby Center raises about twenty-five thousand a year just on this little bake sale that they do. And they offer, you know, these baked items and kind of day-old baked, and the seniors can just drop in what they can. And I was really surprised that they did twenty-five thousand dollars. So now they're doubling the size of it and they're picking up four times a week from MacIntyre's. So that's really generous and really nice. So if you walk into MacIntyre's, thank Ryan for helping out the Glosby Center. That's really all I have now. They're still working on kind of updating their Facebook page, their mark, their website. So the interim director's been really a fun and exciting person to work with. That's really all I have. Oh, one more kind of little thing. So I went to the planning commission meeting and David Law, I believe, was in here this evening. He is doing a five thousand square foot commercial building in Woodland Cove. And his plans, I guess it's four particular, four units, they were really beautiful. It was, it was nice to see the commissioners all kind of rave about how nice it was to see the mockups, the colors, what they were going to be using, the materials. So it's fun to see that. And he's local, so it's kind of nice too. Nice local person's going to really care about what he does here. That's it.
Well, I'll be attending the Sarah Creek, or the painter Sarah Creek, Fire District meeting on Thursday, so nothing to report to them.
And I, as we talked about, Jasper and I, myself and Lisa attended the Fire District meeting with Mal and St. Bonnie. That's, I already covered that, so that's something I have to report. Any other updates? All right. If that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye. All those opposed, motion passes three oh, and our meeting is adjourned.